All right, good evening, everybody. Joint Meeting of the Planning and Development Subcommittee and Town Council Meeting, September twenty seventh, twenty twenty-two, six P M. here in the Veterans Room. Agenda item number one, roll call, Councilor Adams is present. DeeDee?
Present.
Councilor Lozo is excused. Councilor Dow?
Missing.
Yep, we'll put him as absent. And Catherine? Again, I'll call her because this is, she usually gives me a call if she can't make it. All right, and I've got Councilor Steve who's gonna sit in and make a quorum. Okay, agenda item number two, Consider or Accept By in Development, meeting minutes of September seventh, twenty twenty-two. You're the first and the second, please.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, thank you. Discussion?
I'm all set.
You're all set? I'm all set. You abstain? Okay, all those in favor, opposed, abstain, two zero one. Agenda item number two, I'm sorry, three, Discuss Review Whether to Recommend Town Council Accept the Parkland Acquisitions and Renovations for Communities, which is a park grant, to acquire Seventy-Six Central Street and construct a pocket park to be reimbursed up to one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars or seventy percent of the project total. Allow town manager to sign any related documents.
Certainly.
Thank you. Mrs. Town Manager or Ms. Dean?
Forgive me, I have my paperwork on me. We moved the printer out of my office today into the hallway to try to figure out what was causing some kind of electrical smell today.
Do you want this?
So I'm just pulling it off electronically. I think I know what's connected. Yeah, they're trying to get to the bottom of it. So one variable is how. Printer's first. All right, so just quickly.
We lose our carpets.
So this Seventy-Six Central.
Go ahead. All right, go ahead.
The Seventy-Six Central project started as the Land Water Conservation Fund grant about a year and a half ago, and then was recommended by the grant people to be turned into a park grant because we would get a better reimbursement. You approved applying for this, you approved applying for the Land Water Conservation Grant, and I approved applying for the park grant. So now here we are, we're awarded, all good news.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And so, so it begins more work. Here we go with the redevelopment authority. It's actually very exciting because we'll be able to see them work on this over the next year and a half. It needs to be completed by twenty twenty-four. And the other funds that are being used as the matching funds are the miscellaneous funds we have. We've received over the years from housing rehab, C D B G housing rehab projects that may have sold, changed hands, and we got money back and accumulated up to about a hundred thousand dollars. So we have plenty of money for the thirty percent reimbursement we're responsible for. And I just wanna thank you for going along with the different strategies we've had for this grant. You've been patient, and I think that the town, this was the best strategy for the town in the end.
Thank you, Ms. Dean. Discussion?
I'm all set.
Uh, Councilor Marketti, now I'll get you.
Oh, yeah, a couple of things. First of all, in the memo, it keeps saying that it's reimbursed up to one hundred seventy-five thousand. But then in the rest of the document, it says that you are getting one hundred seventy-five thousand. Just wondering why it keeps saying up to. Is it one hundred seventy-five thousand or is there a chance that we won't get one hundred seventy-five?
So you and I may have exchanged comments about this at prior town council meetings. We're hoping that this comes in far less, but we.
Less?
Far less, yes. So we're hoping that for some reason, we don't have to spend the full two hundred.
If you say far less, you should mean the price of purchase.
The purchase rate, we're hoping that the cost of the overall project is far less than.
That's a variable, so if, if, worst case scenario, I think it's up to one seventy-five. I think that's why he's asking why it could fluctuate.
Thank you for clarifying, yes. So we're hoping, we've got up to two hundred fifty thousand dollars with our thirty percent and the one seventy-five. We're hoping that for, for the overall cost of the project, we will not have to spend that much.
And then the other question I have is, do we have a, do we know how much money we have sitting in C D B G funds? Is it sitting in an account somewhere? Do you know exactly how much funds are available in C D B G?
So C D B G is outside of the general funds. I have my many grant years funds, and I don't get a big chunk of money that comes in. We get, we get, we incur expenses, and then we submit those expenses for reimbursement once we have proof of payment, et cetera. With regards to the funds we're discussing tonight, that's C D B G miscellaneous funds. It is not a C D B G account anymore. We are allowed to, under certain criteria, which I think I, over the last few years, tried to educate the town on, it becomes miscellaneous income for the town to use if the C D B G grant from which the housing rehab originated has been closed for at least five years administratively and is less than an accumulated amount of thirty-five thousand dollars per year. So it meets all those criteria. Every time money comes in, I email the, the grantors, and I say, hey, this is another check we're receiving. I think this qualifies based on X, Y, Z, and they'll agree, you're not great.
So do we know how much funds we have in the miscellaneous account?
Approximately a hundred thousand dollars.
So I can, I'll be honest, exactly how much we got?
Sure.
Anything, anything else?
No, I'm set, thank you.
Uh, Councilor Steve?
I'm always curious about, have we seen, since we talked about the size step, have you looked into more about what the demolitions look to cost? And if there are any concerns with potential contamination?
We have not. We just got waiting for award, were awarded. That was the last step, that's the last action we've taken is being awarded. The next steps will be to go forward. Since I came to the town probably a month and a half ago with a request for you to re-adopt the resolution, and within that I provided additional information to the grantor about working with V H B, who's doing the whole tip project for the Rotary. They have been the ones we've been able to consult about what would this do to complement the rail trail. They were the ones that verified with me that I'm ballpark in the right range for, for budget. And we, so we provided that language to the grantor, saying, V H B agrees with us. But otherwise, environmentally, no, we don't have any information.
Is there a claim to, to a, a quick environment, at least a quick environment, to look to, at least, at least a look at D E P to see if they had any issues with this property?
Uh, I, I think the intention, because we're not using it for any other purpose except for open space, is to really just, you know, cap it and make pervious grass and, and trees, so there wouldn't necessarily be any need for investigation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, just checking.
Anything else, Councilor Steve?
I don't know.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed, three zero. Um, agenda item number four, Discuss Review Whether to Recommend Town Council Approve Applying for the Community Compact C C I T Grant for up to one hundred forty-three thousand, three hundred sixty dollars to provide a e-permitting, permitting software townwide. Townwide, allow the town manager to sign any related documents.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Dean?
Okay, so similar to Councilor Marketti's comment about up to one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, this is a very similar motion. We're asking for up to one hundred forty-three, three six zero in this grant, but we do not anticipate that we'll be spending that much. We wanna ensure that we have enough money when we go for the actual quotes that we're, we've been awarded to be able to cover our expenses. And we're not sure at this point exactly which staff are gonna choose to go forward, which departments are gonna choose to go forward. So for instance, the clerk's office currently has a program for dog licenses. And so, you know, they may not choose to use it for that service. The, um, the health inspections director has not been introduced to the software yet. So, you know, we have to give them an opportunity to, to feel out the experience and decide whether or not they think it would be a cost benefit for their department to go forward. My job is to pursue funds for which I think it would best serve the goals I've heard over and over again. One of these is the permitting. Since starting in economic development and planning, I know Eric was advocating for it back when I was just doing C D B G. And then talking with the ARPA, uh, talking with the team about what they wanted to see ARPA used for, it was brought up then, again, that it would be good for permitting. Now, my role is supervising the department. I'm a strong advocate for permitting because I think that it will help with our business friendliness, our customer service, and I also think it will increase the level of code enforcement we can complete. I know other towns have adopted permitting software, and you, uh, you have a much easier time working interdepartmentally on permitting, the bigger permitting. And you find there's a lot of cost of technicus to being able to allow your patrons to pay online rather than having to drive into town hall. The level of convenience, someone who's trying to, you know, get work done at home at night, they can be, you know, plugging their documents and scanning them in, uploading them to the inspections offices, who may have less flexibility with their hours versus, you know, some of these developers. So for lots of reasons, it can serve building, health, it can serve your assessor's office will be integral to a lot of it because they're, they're pulling from our assessor's database automatically, whichever software we go to, and they're uploading a lot of this information for, again, customer service. It's, it's a convenience for the, um, whomever, the contractor, the resident, to be able to have information pre-populated. It can also be used for the fire department. It will be used for, um, help me out there, Michael, who else would be using this?
Virtually any department that issues a permit could use on it, and various vendors. You can buy a set number of officers in the offices they support or arrange. Because we issue some permits, like block party permits or certain things in my office, the liquor board.
Thank you.
You could tie anything in, and as Ms. Dean was talking about, it often creates a workflow for you. So sometimes people have to walk around and get a signature at the police department, then go to the fire department, then to inspections. Once they submit it online, they can pay online right into Unibank that we use. And then depending on which vendor, there's a workflow that you set up, and it would, each department would get an email, they have to go in, read it, check it off. And as she said, you can do this off-hours. We have a lot of contractors that wanna get these things done first thing in the morning, even earlier than eight. So it would allow them the flexibility, plus you layer a lot of these over our G I S mapping system with the assessors, so that if somebody comes in at a later date to look, click on the property, they could see if they have outstanding building permits or maybe they haven't paid their taxes. There's a lot of technology and data that you can leverage. I was in charge, I spearheaded this effort in the last town I worked in. So there's, there's a lot of things that came out of it. And the other thing is sometimes you get economies of scale rather than having each department buy their own piece of software. You get one vendor that, that supplies this for the entire town hall. That was the problem we had my last town hall, where inspections had one, they had a dog permit, and the clerks, somebody else, and there was no sharing of data, and there was no, you know, common application, so that everybody had to negotiate with different people. There was no cost savings and no savings in, in human hours spent chasing this all down.
Okay.
There are advantages to doing it.
And if I could just share, we sat through two demos with the fire department building inspections, planner, et cetera, and we heard from the fire department, the initial call, they weren't sure. By the second call, they said, we need this, this is great. This is something that really would make life easier for, for all of us. Again, with that interdepartmental piece.
Thank you.
So that was very assuring to me. So I would love to see the town at least go through the first hurdle of applying for the Community Compact I T Grant for the permitting software. Should we be awarded at that time, we would then go out for some more demos, decide who's, who's in, who's out, go out for the final quotes to, to be able to then come to the town for approval to purchase the, the software. And we would need then to supplement it with the annual cost. So there will be an annual cost to all the software, but again, I think it will be worth.
Do you know how much that's gonna be?
So in this one, it's about an additional fifty percent. So, you know, it was like another seventy thousand dollar annual fee to be able to pay for.
To add into the budget?
To add into the annual budget, but that's across X number of departments. And so if you break that out for the cost of the software, you know, and then you're looking at this sort of cost benefit analysis of what you're doing for the town, will you be getting more code enforcement out of it when we begin, right? So how do you measure a cleaner town with better code enforcement? How do you measure historical data that future employees will be able to look back at and have accurate information for a contractor to be able to know the standing of his building when they go to purchase, right? And so these things start to become a little more qualitative, right? But I do feel like they're well worth the investment.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Ms. Dean. Councilor Steve?
Um, yeah, that made me think of a couple of things. First of all, will, is it, is it possible to add not, currently non-existing permits into the software? Like, for example, I, I know, for example, that the Historical Commission is looking at the idea of doing demolition permits. Demolition delays, demolition delays, for example. Would some, would stuff like that be able to be added into the software? Or, or is, is it, does it cover conservation permits? Or does it cover anything we may want to add at some point in the future?
So I, I think it depends upon how you negotiate the contract and whether you have some type of scalable, um, number of departments and permits that you can add. We, one of the demonstrations we sat through was from a company called Permanize. That's one we used in Chelmsford. They have, many of these, um, vendors have dealt with many municipalities. So they have a library of forms and things right then and there. Usually they wanna know just, they either bill you by the number of users, seats, like individuals in each department that are gonna access it, or by a department. So you usually wanna negotiate with some level of flexibility. If we're thinking we want, like, we need twelve, you might negotiate, say, I want the price for fifteen in case I, um, need that flexibility. And many of these vendors are also in state bid list. That eliminates the requirement to go out for an R F P. And oftentimes, what you do is you can just go ahead and negotiate with them, and you can negotiate with two or three of them. It's still best practice to look at a couple of them. But really, what you wanna do at this point, assuming we get the compact grant, it really comes down to the, the offerings of the software because they're very similar, and they're also similarly priced. Some, again, are very expensive, um, Tyler Tech who makes Munis, I've found, they're, they tend to be more expensive than anybody else. But, you know, we wanna find something that's the best fit for us. But, yeah, you, you should be able to, to add on without.
Thank you.
I know that we had, I know that speaking of Tyler, I know that we had issues with Tyler with our industry transition. So also, as far as, um, they put the software itself goes, is it possible, um,
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I remember. Um, so do, is it, are there any versions of this kind of program that are not software by subscription, but that we would actually own the software? And would it make sense to do that?
So part of the provision of Community Compact I T Grant is that if you do a SaaS or a software as a service, you have to have some kind of ownership or buy, you know, something that you can walk away from. If, for instance, we couldn't raise the funds the next year for the annual subscription. And so this does have, um, it's guts are ours, whatever, we walk away from them. And it is potentially applicable to other softwares or, you know, services.
Okay.
Yeah, we have to verify that with this.
Okay, that's.
I am not a software person, however, and so again, Michael, was that a fair answer? Is there a better way to say it?
Well, you don't get the software generally stored on your host like you used to. But a lot of times you're using cloud-based software as a service. Um, but I think the way we set it up in my last, we had servers for the data locally and hosted in the cloud, so that we did have at least one copy of our data, which in many cases, these vendors have the ability to import the data from one to another.
Okay. And the last question is, how does, how would this, these kinds of software services work with our cybersecurity? To make sure that we're not, we're not having, not opening a cybersecurity door by having outside people using the permitting software and possibly creating problems with town hall?
Generally, they're gonna be hosted by them on the cloud on their end. So it would be their, it should be their responsibility. We can ask that question, you know, further, but they're gonna be secure, they're be responsible for who can log in and log out. The cybersecurity generally comes by an attack to either our firewall or some, somebody's sending us an email. So if, uh, there's usually a link embedded on your website, go here to do the permit. It brings you to their hosted solution. So anybody who creates an account, everything is doing it through the web on their, their server, not ours.
Councilor Steve, anything else?
Um, I don't know.
Okay, thank you. Um, any others? Councilor Marketti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for you. My, my question is, how user-friendly is this for residents? Not all residents in software do things online. I know my wife, even when I repay a bill, I come right in here with a check and I pay the bill. I was really like doing things online, either gonna be adding fees, either gonna be, I'm gonna have to be really savvy with using, uh, computers. Because I, I gotta tell you, a lot of people in software do not do it that way.
Mm-hmm.
Just that it is.
Okay, that's off to a good start.
So I, I think that becomes an internal decision and how you wanna do it. Some municipalities put a terminal, right, you know, that's old technology, terminal, but some type of either a laptop or something right there so that if someone walks in, they can type all the information in and it gets into the system. The other option is they, you have to fill out the form there and then our staff types it in. But the, the model here is to get people in the habit of them typing it in, um, you know, to reduce staff costs. But if somebody walks in, they, depending upon how we implement it, they could either type it in right there at the counter or, you know, they submit the thing in a form, and administrative or clerical staff will type it in at some point, but there shouldn't be any penalty.
The fees, because there's a fee now, I believe, isn't there a fee now?
Yeah.
If you pay.
There is a fee online.
Yeah.
You, that, well, you mean when you pay the bill?
Right.
You, you're an electronic bank. But your option is either to mail it in or walk it in, and some people don't, would rather pay, you know. It, it's a convenience, you have to look at it that way, you know, for some of those things.
Can I caveat off with, Councilor Marketti, real quick? So if you're, if there is a fee added to this, and we're having to pay annual dues to this, why not earmark, I hate to say this word, but earmark that money to pay for the software program? Instead of, instead of trying to find it in the budgets, automatically, it's already there set aside. Because I don't think it's fair that we're getting a grant and then all of a sudden they now report a charge of a fee to it, um, the first year? If there is. You know, I don't mean, I don't need you to talk, talk about, I just, I wanted to voice my opinion, but go ahead, Councilor Marketti.
Almost.
You sure?
What do you mean? You don't wanna feed the first, I mean, you.
Well, I, I don't think, if we're gonna budget for it every single year in our own budget, and then we're gonna charge a fee for the people to use it, I mean, I feel like we're actually now starting to double dip, even if it's twenty-five cents or fifty cents.
Agreed.
So, I mean, it's either we do it, and we earmark that, those funds for it, and we don't have to worry about it, we can do a general budget, or we, we, uh, what's the word? I mean, I don't think, I think it's double dipping at that point.
I think I would have to research because generally if you do an E C H where you put your bank account, checking account, routing number and all that, those are generally free on most things. But I, I'd have to check how Unibank does it. But it's if you bill it to a credit card, you usually get the three percent fee. You're saying, you're saying that regardless of the payment.
It's a fee regardless.
All right, I'll, I'll have to look.
Let me throw it this way. Every time I register a car, it costs me so much money online. Not register a car, but to pay my excise tax.
Right.
If I do it individually, each one gets a fee to it. Actually, I think no matter what I do, each vehicle gets a fee to it. Like somehow or another, it's that much more effort.
Exactly.
I don't mean to bring up a munis here, I just, I think.
Are you completely right, they do that.
But that you need a bank, and I'll have to look into that.
And we're, and we're paying town, town staff to do those.
And it may be a bank.
Paying for it and paying the town staff.
Right. So it, anything, so anybody else have any questions? Council, uh, Mr. Chenier?
Give a little jump in a little head on the fee structure. Myself is give it to the people for free. If you're gonna charge them seventy thousand dollars on the tax rate, just give it for free. It's ridiculous now that we pay things at, at fee-based and we also pay them at tax rate. I'll just use an incident with the tolls. I got a bill yesterday for eleven, eleven ninety-five, we're going into Boston in back, and I went to go pay it by plate because it wasn't on my Transfond up. And they charged me three dollars and fifty-five cents on top of the fee base.
Exactly.
Already that I'm paying with the toll. So, I mean, if you're gonna do this, it's premature to even speak on this right now, to be honest, but if you're gonna pay seventy thousand dollars in tax paid money, there should not be a fee for the tax paid at all.
Not, not in top, not in top of the regular permit fee that you.
Well, I, I agree with maybe premature, but I just wanna maybe plant the seed at this point in time when they do it. Um, Councilor Daniel? I'm sorry, Mr. Chenier, were you done?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for you. Um, on the face of it, I just, I just think that this is something worth investigating. This seems to be an answer to complaints that I was hearing when I first ran for office a few years ago about the town not being business friendly. And it being very difficult to find, uh, resources for people that are coming into town or wanting to come into town and get things done. This seems to be, unless I'm missing something, this seems to be a one-stop-shopping kind of situation in terms of the permits and the process, getting it all done and getting it all involved. So I certainly agree with what the previous conversation has been, the previous couple of speakers, uh, in terms of fees. But overall, I think the idea itself is a good idea and is definitely worth investigating.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Dean?
I just wanna point out that the software that we'll purchase and the pay vendor will use are not necessarily connected. So we use Unibank, we could also, there are other pay vendors. And so those fees and how they operate are dependent on those pay vendors. It's not necessarily related to the permitting software. So the permitting software will connect to whatever that we choose to. And so we could do our homework and find out.
I understand that, and I think a lot of us do understand there's a, there's a third party involved in this whole thing. So, I mean, like most of them, I do believe online paying is a, is a third, it's a bank. And I think Melissa explained that to us when we went to that or something like that. My question, I, any other questions? The only other question I had, was it an annual fee after that? So to answer that question, thank you. What you, it sounds to me, and Councilor Daniel brought up, can the town manager, let's say the town clerk, who's used that as an example, says, I don't wanna use this. Well, we, we as taxpayers are paying for this process. Can it be mandated that everybody uses the software? Because it's, like he said, one-stop-shop. I know we, you know, and it's not them, it's maybe it's David Adams, Department Head, and it says, I wanna use it this way, uh, only this and no other way. Well, I'm gonna have to catch on board, just like Munis had to catch on board and everything else. Can it be mandated by the town manager and say, you're all gonna start using it because it's all gonna be beneficial to you?
Yes.
Okay.
And I, I think if somebody has an existing contract with other software, the easiest time is when they contract it up. You just say, we gotta migrate. And usually, as I said, these vendors know their competitors and have a tool that'll allow them to import the data.
And I think that would be just a little bit more, everybody would have a stake in this in the near future, um, for all the departments. Okay, that's all I.
One quick question to follow up on what the manager just said. So how many departments currently have their own processing software? Current software?
Well, I don't know if the, I don't have any answer to that. I do know that the clerks does have something for dog licensing. Um, I think many people just do traditional paper permits.
Yeah.
Ms. Dean?
My quick survey around town hall is that, or not town hall, the town in general, is that the police and fire have for their specific emergency responder needs, but maybe not for the building, for the fire department doesn't have it for the building department function, like the interdepartmental function that we're looking for.
Yeah.
And then, yes, just the clerk's office for the dog licenses.
And obviously, I can do that.
And, and they have created a couple of their own free forms online. And, and they have created a, a couple of their own free forms online, um, to substitute for, so work around.
Thank you.
Okay, okay. And if I can throw a quick idea out there, is that I think in some cases, if we're gonna be doing this kind of permitting centralization, which is, sounds like a good idea for, for flow, I think it might be a good idea to start looking at how we can bring some of these boards and commissions together. Um, and having, start having some more joint meetings so that we can make it easier for the people to, like, for example, conservation planning, sit down together with the same, same proposal, proposals and do it together at the same time. Rather than having, having a meeting the next day or two weeks later or whatever it is, just delay the process and everybody asks the same questions over and over again.
The, uh, Ms. Shenier.
Is this something that DBW could use, utilize also, like for, for instance, the big talk has been to somebody to foot trenching. Out there yesterday, today, there's a company that's called Pro Logistics, I think, something like that. So, it would come in, assign a permit to the Pro Logistics, for instance, or an address. It would assign it, so it would be there in the cloud somewhere. It has the functions of that particular department, inspections, pictures, and signing off on it. Uh, not only would it be fed into the system, but the department head or the engineer could also access that system to see where. So is that something that could be utilized in DBW also?
It sounds like just the use, that, um, the stormwater permitting was something that, that DeJardine was very excited to potentially adopt. Um, and Kirk cut standard, you know, permits, they're all original.
Hey, uh, I, I can talk to you offline, I, I know we're going away, it's still great though, let's go ahead.
Last, many of these also have a phone or tablet-based app that goes along with this. And what we did in the last time I worked in, we ordered a fair amount of tablets for the field inspectors so that you could go out, pull up, as Mr. Shenier said, and you could actually take a picture of what you're seeing and document it right there. So if there was a problem, they take it, tags right to the permit.
Oh, I was thinking of work tickets as well, go ahead.
And another question, follow up on the cybersecurity angle. Um, are there ways in, um, how does the software make sure that the people who are signing it are actually town people that are, that are qualified to sign through?
Well, the administration wants the software, you have to put in a list of users and they get various levels of privileges. And you sign up the workflows that you, you know, for instance, building, it would have to be reviewed by the building inspector, electrical inspector, plumbing inspector, and it would go through, it would have, each, somebody would have to hit it. And when enough, usually there's a, you know, a logic formula, if A, B, and C are all clicked, then it goes for the final of the building inspector. And then it would email everybody and say, your permit is approved, you have to pay your fee and then you're good to go.
The u- user, like myself, just from resident, I can be able to pull up only a certain amount of information. I can't change anything, I can go in there and take a look at it. And, and it would just be authorization, whoever's controlling that software program, so.
Well, I was thinking in terms of like making sure that, that somebody can't hack into it and start putting in like, faking, faking Mike Julian's appearance.
Well, you can always take that chance when it comes to, to security. All right, anything else? All right, thank you, um, all those favor, votes, three zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number five, discuss review whether to recommend town council approve a plan for the Green Communities Competitive Grant for up to two hundred thousand dollars for energy upgrades at the DBW, the middle highst, middle, uh, middle high school and West Street School, and allow the town manager to sign any related documents. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Town Manager? Ms. Dean?
I, I don't have the package, so I don't have the information here on this particular item, and I do not know those.
I'm happy to. So, I would put it in this format of a, you choose of the three projects because what I recall vaguely from a few years ago, when the last Green Communities projects were being awarded, uh, I was, I think I may have just been starting to get involved with other grants besides CDVG. And I heard the town council say, I'd like a choice. I'd like to be able to see options from the school and the pub, and the public facilities to be able to decide where the money is spent. So I was unsure how to make this, uh, motion as efficient as possible, while at the same time allowing you to choose. You have to, if you're going to choose to go forward with this competitive grant, it has to go through a town council on Monday. So unfortunately, there's not a lot of room for discussion. I was hoping this was gonna be brought before you sooner, uh, but we just didn't get the numbers from, um, the energy conservation, uh, people in time to be able to, uh, give you offerings. So, uh, how I made the motion was I left the, um, DPW, Middle High School and West Street in, and then you can always just revise the remote, the motion to remove if one of those items is not approved. Should you wanna go for one, two, or three?
Are there other areas, Ms. Dean? That you guys were looking at, or just these straight things?
These, these were the ones I was suggested by ECI as, um, the ones that have accurate pricing to be able to go forward with competitive grants. This is your first competitive grant through Green Communities since getting your initial, um, uh, chunk of money after being awarded your Green Community status. Uh, and so, uh, you did, you've done a lot of projects over the last few years that have either been on bill savings or direct Green Communities funding. And now it, it's our chance to go for a competitive grant. Uh, it's not even guaranteed we'll get the funds, but, um, if we can, we have to commit under two hundred thousand dollars. And so these were the ones that were suggested. So as you can see, most of them are things like air source pumps, lighting upgrades, and weatherization. And then it's just a matter of where. Eric said he didn't have any suggestions except that he'd like to see the DPW upgrades. Um, but, uh, that was just his personal opinion. Uh, obviously, the largest of all the projects is the middle high school lighting for ninety-three thousand dollars. Um, but again, this is all Green Communities, one thing.
It, okay, Counselor Marcati, uh, Counselor Steve, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Um, just looking at this, um, memo here and the paperwork that you provided, there really isn't enough information for us to even, um, to sign on this. I mean, DPW air source pump, we don't know where it's going. What's, what is being installed? Uh, fifty-six thousand dollars, I, I take it this is like a mini-split system? That seems awful high for that type of, uh, system. Uh, ninety-three thousand for middle high school lighting, that's virtually a brand-new school. And I'm not sure why they would need lighting.
Pretty much, it's over.
And then if, uh, so if, if it's something that, you know, it's last minute and you have to decide, then I would recommend we let it go. But if you're going to do it, then I would just go with number two. Because I really, there's really not enough information here, um, for us to even make a, a, a good decision on things like this. Um, and also we have capital planning just starting up, so these are all these things we're gonna be looking at as well. Uh, my suggestion would just be go to number two if you wanna do this. But other than that, like I said, uh, to, to wait to the last minute and expect us to, to decide on something with really no specifics here whatsoever. I mean, where, where are the DPWs, this going, does anybody know? Is it going into the front office there or?
I can't speak to it unfortunately.
I know, I mean, I, I did many splits at my house, it cost, it cost nine thousand dollars and it does my whole house, so I don't know. I think there just be, needs to be some more specifics. If, if not, then I would go with number two, that would be my suggestion.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Steves?
Um, one thing I think that, first of all, I think, didn't, didn't we already do some of the lighting for the, I'm not gonna go?
We, we, I don't know if it was the high school or the elementaries. Go ahead, Ms. Dean.
You used your very last bit of less than ten thousand dollars of your Green, Green Communities funding for partial lighting. That was the very last and you approved.
So, it's more, so most of the school hasn't been done.
Correct.
Um, and personally, I have no problem with doing weatherization in DPW, that giant, that plays as a giant part, it's, it's huge, it's a waste of perspective.
I know, like that doors open up.
Exactly, I mean, that's why, definitely needs weatherization. Uh, I'm not sure about, to be honest with you, what an air source pump actually being in.
It's like a Mutes.
That doesn't answer my question.
Ms. Dean, maybe she can, Ms. Dean.
No, but I would, uh, be happy to, um, follow up with Chris Collins from ECI and get as much in writing as possible to you on Monday.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, but generally speaking, I, I have no, I have no problem with doing, um, so, I guess I know of the lighting, because we have done the other schools lighting, I saw the list on the next page. Um, so I have, have no problem really with doing the lighting and upgrading the, the lighting for the middle high school and doing weatherization. Um, if we get some information, the other thing I think is.
Wh- which one did you say, weatherization number one?
Uh, the weatherization for DPW, I think is a good idea in middle school lighting, for middle high school lighting, I think is a good idea.
And the air source pump, so you're looking at one?
Yeah.
Okay. I just, I've gotta write this down. One, okay, two. Ms. uh, Dean?
Just a quick question, it says here, of the choices from the table, we can find two or three out of four.
Where's the four?
Yeah, where's the four?
Uh, what's that four? Uh, so you have DPW air source heat pump.
Yeah.
High school lighting, West Street air source heat pump, or DPW weatherization. So there are four projects we cannot afford to fund on for.
Okay, all through all this.
Okay, I see, just saying, okay.
All right. That answer your question?
Yes.
Anybody else? Um, so I guess my question is, I, I'm kinda open to see where it goes. I mean, we're just applying for this one or no matching, no nothing, right? Just two hundred thousand dollars?
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, can't go wrong with two hundred thousand, as long as we have a plan in place. Sounds like there's a partial plan.
Semi-plan.
But there's, you know, um, I think the council on Monday night would have to, to say what they would like to go. And I think we just have to, have to try to tighten this up a little bit if we can. I, I'm agreement with Counselor Marcati, my, basically, it's, they cost that much money. But assuming there're gonna be a lot more, you know, maybe, probably a bigger area or whatever it may be. Um, and there may be multiple areas too, so I don't know. Um, are you looking for us to, to, to go one, two, and three right now? Or do you want the town council to look at one, two, and three? Or do we just say, you know, get the two hundred thousand dollars, do your home, do your research, do your research and then come back, or what?
I, I would, um, let the subcommittee decide what they think is smartest, whether you wanna recommend specific projects or you would, whether you wanna bring, I'll list it to town council for them to choose. But you do have to choose by Monday night because then the application is based on the cost savings competitiveness against other towns' projects.
Okay, then I'll just run it out there, Counselor, uh.
I would just put it up and.
Well, we, I think the subcommittee can already make a recommendation. So I, I, I'd go with Counselor Marcati, he's number two, I know he's not at the subcommittee, but he is counsel. Counselor Steves, you want number one?
I think, I think that makes more sense here, especially with.
We have counsel in here, so. Two?
Finish one building and then the capital committee will go after the DPW building, I think.
Okay. Ms., Ms. LaRochelle?
One.
Oh, jeez. You guys. It's like herding cats, thank you.
I'm sorry.
All right. Um.
DPW building's a huge, huge heat sink.
Yes.
That's why it needs weatherization, just for the cat, I think.
All right, well, then.
I know, but that's a, that's a building that you're gonna have doors opening up all the time, so.
It does, but it does.
Exactly, but it's not gonna, it's really gonna be a waste of money, I think, to do a building like that.
All right.
It's fine.
I'll go with two.
Do we worry wasting my?
So what I'll do is I'll recommend this to, uh, I'll recommend this, uh, I'll put both, all the votes, or just at least we got a census of the room. And, and I'll give that to, uh, you, you had the census, I'll send that to Ms. Dean as well. Um.
So, so we, so I'm, so I basically, let me send it, so then basically, are, so we're sending it up with either one or number of recommendations, either one or two?
Right, so right now you have a three, two vote on number two. And all, all the, all the stuff.
We're all in favor of proposal, just which version we're using.
Yeah, I'll have to change the motion, uh, we can amend the motion. Uh, anybody wanna amend that motion now, or I could just send it straight up to, with a new motion to the town council? With, with number two is, is being the recommended at this point in time. Anybody got a problem with that?
No, no problem.
All right.
It's fine.
Oh, okay. Good answer. All right, good to go. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Post, three zero. I'll, I'll put it for his number two with a close second of number one.
Close to the one, the vote.
I'll put that in motion two.
Those voting members vote, voted two, two to one on number one.
Yeah, he's, he's an ex-officio, so.
You know, I, I'm trying to get a census here, I'm trying to work together. All right, let's finish this up. Motion to adjourn, motion to adjourn?
We'll, we'll.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
All right, thank you. Uh, need a second on that? Uh, thank you. All those in favor? Post, uh, Steve's posed, uh, three zero.